At this time, I'd like to call the Order of Business of August 25, 2015. Mr. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Nettie Pigian.
Present.
Kenneth Baron.
Here.
Thomas Berry is absent. Robert Constant.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Margaret Horvath.
Here.
Joseph Kaczynski.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Our Director of Ordinance and Animal Control, Jack McKintry, has a presentation to make to three National Honor Society students and some residents who helped out with his office this past summer. And I'd like to ask, Michelle, I guess coordinated a lot of this from the Ordnance Department, have Michelle and the students, Sandra, Dela, and Yisha, stand up and please lead us in the pledge.
(inaudible) (inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, at this time, I'd like to have Jack come to the front and Mayor, if you would also come up.
Thank you, everybody, for coming, especially the families of the girls we're recognizing tonight. Back in June, we were slammed. We had, on an average, 150 phone calls a day coming into the Ordnance Department. We were having a hard time keeping up with that many calls. So Michelle had been talking to Dana, who works in our water department, and Dana had mentioned that she knew Mrs. Johns from the Crestwood. Mrs. Johns is a National Honor Society advisor for Crestwood High School. And so between Michelle and Ms. Johns, they coordinated this, and as a result, we got Yisha, Dahlia, and Sandra to come work with us every day. They're required to get 10 hours towards their credit for the National Honor Society. They exceeded that each by about 30 hours. They've actually worked with us for two months, which is longer than we ever expected. And they did everything in the office. They answered voicemails, they scheduled enforcements, they went on some ride-alongs, they, some got to see how we operate the dog truck, and they did, they were a part of that. And they even were allowed to go to the court system and see how some of our enforcements end up in the court system and how that process works. So if Michelle could come up, I'm gonna let Michelle call them out.
Okay, we'll have the first girl who showed up, Yisha, come up for her certificate. She was the one that started with us first.
Congratulations. Thank you.
(laughing) Then we'll have Dahlia come up. Dahlia and Sandra kinda worked as a team, so do you wanna come up too, Sandra? They were always here at the same time.
(applause)
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. These girls have been such a blessing to us.
One thing I wanted to mention is, one of the things they had to do was know which officer worked in which area of the city when they were scheduling the enforcements. And it got to be quite a grueling task to get up out of the chair, walk over to the map, and then look to see. So several of them took pictures on their camera phones, and that way they didn't have to get up. They were able to look right on their phones and see which officer was assigned to which area. One of the things that is a benefit of having young people around, you learn from them. You really do. And we especially did. This was a great idea, and we hope to continue doing it, so.
If the family wants to take pictures, just come forward.
Yeah. Now that each of you got a taste of City Hall and public service and government, do any of you look forward to working in government, maybe, when you graduate?
(inaudible).
Okay.
(laughing)
Oh, okay. So I hear one's gonna be a pharmacist you're looking at. Well, everything I heard, we got an expert quality of service way beyond your age and years of experience. And so each of you, I know whatever you choose to do, you're gonna be great success. So thank you so much. And it makes us proud that we live in a community that has young people like you, and the future's in good hands. I don't know if Ken Baron will.
Thank you.[343.41][343.41](applause)
No, we really do appreciate your service, and Mrs. Johns, she's here all the time with stuff and trying to help out, so she's a great mentor, I'm sure, for you, and I know she was to our family also. And my daughter works in her department also, but, so again, thank you very much from all of us.[365.84][365.84](applause)
Wait a second. Hold on there, real quick. Some, what? Oh, okay. We have some other people to honor today, so.
Well, one of the things I'm a big advocate of is neighborhood associations and the involvement of residents in the community. We really couldn't do most of our job without the influence and the input from the residents, residents calling in and letting us know about code violations or things that are occurring in the city. So we rely heavily on that. There are three in particular that I wanted, well, actually four, but I don't think Gloria is here. No. Three in particular, starting with Frank. Frank, if you can come up real quick. Frank, I refer to as the Lone Ranger of the Southwest Dearborn Heights Neighborhood Association. Frank is pretty much the sole force behind their neighborhood watch. He patrols almost every night, and then he calls in the morning, he lets me know about abandoned cars, abandoned houses, people that are moving in that he doesn't think follow the procedure in getting a certificate of occupancy or an inspection. And so Frank is a valuable member of his association and a real valuable member of our community, and he needs help. So I, every time I'm out there and I'm meeting people, especially in the southwest area of the city, I'm letting him know to get ahold of Frank, 'cause he can't do it by himself. He needs help. Two hours, one hour. I've even patrolled in their area as well, so.
One of the things I monitor and listen to, police calls, and we probably should give Frank a number, because he's out there with his eyes, his ears, he watches the community, and I know that he's very persistent, 'cause I've heard a couple times where he saw a light somewhere that, in a building that shouldn't be, 'cause he knew it was unoccupied, and he'll, he'll sit there, and I've heard the dispatcher, and I'll just pick a number, but car 65, it's Frank again calling, no one's come around to check that building. But it's important, because Frank is assisting our police and our fire operations by being an extra pair of eyes, and you don't get paid for this. This is completely volunteer. Thank you so much, and on behalf of all the residents, particularly those that live in that area, you do a great service for everybody, and I think it goes way beyond anything I've ever seen, so.
I agree.[528.79][528.79](applause)
The other person I wanted to mention isn't here. Her name is Gloria Batrou. I call her the unofficial block captain of Penny Street in the southwest side of the city. She kinda has championed the businesses along Beach Daily, and she holds them accountable for the condition of their property and that, and she calls me on a regular basis. Once or twice a week, Gloria and I talk particularly about a business that we've had a lot of issues with. That business, we've kinda got most of the things resolved. Unfortunately, it had to go to court, but we've got things cleaned up there, and I really attribute Gloria to the success of that, so I'll make sure she gets this. The other, the next person is Karen Tesleck, if you can come on up. Right from the beginning, when we opened us, opened the animal control department, Karen was a supporter of our, our animal control program. On a regular basis, Karen looks for sales on towels and buys them out of her own pocket. She comes and donates towels on a regular basis. The towels we use in the trucks, the animal control truck when we're picking up animals, especially injured animals, and then we also donate the rest of them to the, our shelter. If you've ever been to the shelter, when the animals are staying in the shelter cage, they get like a, kind of a little cot that they can lay on, and each cot has a towel, and many of the towels have come from Karen. So we appreciate that. She's always been a big supporter of ordinance and animal control, and we appreciate that, Karen.[628.66][628.66](applause) Certainly, last and not, not least, is Joanne Dixon, if you can come on up. When we went through our animal control training, our trainer kinda said, hey, stay away from the Huggers, they call them, which are kinda tend to be the people that have rescues. Sometimes they can be a little interfering in your process. We found it to be the complete opposite, particularly with Joanne. She's the founder and-
President.
-president of Providing for Paws. When we've come into situations where folks that maybe need a license, maybe they need vet care, maybe their animal needs to be spayed or neutered, we currently are dealing with a person who, their dog has a condition called mange, we call on Joanne, and Joanne's organization, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna give her a little bit of TV time to tell about her, her program, but we've called on her, and she has been the result. She comes through, she has community outreach people in her organization that go and interview people in our community, find out what their needs are, from food, to vet care, to temporary housing, fostering, and she does that. We can't appreciate Joanne enough. She's always available to us, and I wanted to recognize her for that. I also wanted to mention that Joanne is Tammy Dixon's mother, well, actually, not Tammy Dixon anymore, who works in the Parks and Rec Department. So we appreciate you so much, Joanne, and hopefully we'll continue this relationship. It's worked out great.
Thank you.[761.57][761.57](applause) Thank you very much. We, as Huggers, as they call us in animal control, we started this to help the animals in the community. We service five counties, so we're pretty busy. We can't always help with medical condition, but we always know the cheapest place to go. But we will always do spay, neuters, vaccines, and food at all times, so we try to get people to encourage their, to properly care for their animals in the community, and even through Eggloos and things, straw in the wintertime also will help with that. So we're happy to help your city, and we hope to continue on with the good work we do together.
She always is looking for donations, so go to providingforpaws.com?
Dot org.
Dot org. Always looking for donations. One of the things that I know she's aware of, and she actually saves us money, because she's able to allow animals to stay in homes that they normally wouldn't be able to because for financial reasons. So that's one less animal that we're taking to our shelter, and that's one less animal that we have to pay for to be in that shelter, so I can't, I can't appreciate Joanne enough, so.
You know, Jack, before you leave, all week I've been seeing a Dearborn animal control truck in our parking lot, and then I asked you, and you told me that we are training Dearborn's animal control. And I think that says an awful lot, that in the last couple of years, we had a plan that we were gonna have the best animal control, not in Wayne County, but in the state of Michigan, and we've achieved it, and now we're taking that expertise to surrounding communities. Good job, Jack. Good job to everybody in your department. And as, you got a couple, we're beagle owners, or was, was a beagle owner, but Speedy passed away, but thank you for the good work you do, and that's, that's just great.
And we appreciate you having animal control. A lot of cities don't, and police are too busy to take care of these calls, so it's great to have somebody to reach out to. I wish every city had it.
Thank you. Okay.[905.12][905.12](applause)
Thanks, Lisa. Thought you were hitting me. Let them know they can all leave now. Yeah. Yeah, if you, you don't have to stay for the meeting if you don't wish to.
Again, on behalf of the council and myself, I want to thank the students and the residents that help out so much. Thank you.
If you could do that.
The next order of business is approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I move to approve the Order of Business, August 25, 2015, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council as outlined and provided.
Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Aide number four, approval of the minutes, 4A, the minutes of the regular meeting of August 11, 2015.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
I move that the council approve the minutes of the last meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council dated August 11 as submitted.
Second by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Aide number six, fund transfers and current claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I move that the council approve current claims 6-1 through 6-29.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question about-
Councilwoman Pigian.
I have a question about 15, which is the billing for McKenna Associates. For the life of me, no matter how much I added up everything here, I don't get $2,775. If you add up just the subtotal amounts, you get $2,490. You add up the travel, you get $15 more. I don't understand why, it says total due and payable, $14,000 at the bottom, and we don't, it's not paid. I wanna know where that number works.
Councilwoman Pigian, I know we mentioned this last meeting, but did you call Vince on this, so he could do this ahead of time in case there's some?
No, I didn't. I just finished it.
Well, you probably should do that, but Vince, do you have any, what he's-
That's right.
What is it?
Only where Mohammed Sobah's initials is-
Right, I added those up.
Well, the 180 would be backed out, and I think the 90.
Right, the 180 with my name on it is not included. Even I added that, and I don't get this number. But, now what are we doing about the $14,000 total due and payable?
We're working on it right now. We're working on it.
Don't show it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Aide number seven, consideration of bids, 7A, advertise for bids for Central Park Pavilion Project.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Pigian.
I move to approve Kenneth Gribble, our rec director's request for specification and bid process for the Central Park Pavilion Project. Having received confirmation of the city's 2013-14 Wayne County Park Village intergovernmental agreement, which is approved by the commission, we are authorized, we are authorizing the preparation of specifications to direct the city controller to advertise for bids, not to allocate to this project $36,000.
No, no, they're just asking, go out to bids, we don't know what they'll be.
Interesting. Total amount allocated.
Well, that's what was allocated.
Right.
Could come in less or more.
Hopefully, we'll get it for less.
Yes, support.
Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
I'm curious as to how this selection was made over other potential expenditures for this park village. What I'm thinking about is the possibility of those needs and other parks all around the community that could take advantage of this money coming from Wayne County and the village. What was the outstanding reason that this election was made for the indicated expenditure?
Yes, this was a project that was brought to City Council, and council did approve it both in the master plan process and also when I submitted the initial project. But just to give you, you know, additional information, the reason we selected this, this project, first, I tried to match it to the amount of money that, that were allocated, and hopefully it doesn't go over budget, and I don't believe this one will, as it was two years ago when we selected the project. We have, right now, we have a park, and we have a very nice park playscape at that site. We have a ball diamond, and this would be a location that would be just west of the Campfield Ice Arena. And we have a summer recreation program that's there, and we've had issues with them having a place to properly eat their lunch, and this would give them a site to do that. We have well over 100 kids in that program for eight months, eight weeks during the summer. And we also, right now, one of the biggest activities that we have in request is for picnicking in our parks, and this would give us another location, and I believe that people would rent the facility because of the playscape, and the ball diamonds, and the nice restroom facilities that we have put into that park. It would make for a very nice package, and, and I think we would increase the utilization of the park with this pavilion.
Would there be any potential for revenues in the use of that pavilion?
Yes, yeah, we'll rent it just like we do over at Van Houten at Parkland at our different park sites, and I truly believe that we will get a lot of requests for that location.
Very good. I was matching a single improvement as against the potential of distributing that package of money over a large number of locations where the benefits would be of greater return, but I accept your explanation with regard to the pavilion. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Aide number nine, reports from city officials, 9A, from Corporate Council Miyake, proposed charter amendments regarding publication requirements for the adoption of laws, regulations, etc., etc. This is received and open file.
Some movements, Chairman.
Support.
Councilman Kaczynski, second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Gary, good, good job. Letter here signed by the governor, so. Couple letters.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
The second portion that Governor Snyder didn't sign off on, when will it be appropriate to begin to work on it so that it appears on the 2016 ballot?
I could start working on that toward the end of this year, and I don't see there being any sort of a problem. The difficulty is that the Attorney General's Office has issued about three different opinions that don't really recognize the difference between publishing an ordinance in full and publishing a code that would be adopted by reference in full. And he keeps trying to push us into doing a summary, but some of these things that we'd be adopting are, I mean, they're like a half inch thick. It's like, all the regulations, and it's like, no, we just want to adopt this stuff by reference, and that makes sense, and there's case law that says that we can end up doing it. So my sense would be, we could potentially do this again, this body could end up going with the two-thirds. I could try to tweak it some more, so George doesn't give me grief about this, but institutionally, the Attorney General's Office has been kinda consistent about really not recognizing this distinction, so it makes it difficult.
Councilwoman Miyake, the second portion that you're defining for us now can be put on the ballot on a two-thirds vote of the council. Is that the understanding we get?
That is correct.
Okay.
My, my recommendation would be to allow me to try to work with George's wording some more, the way he's done it, and then try to get it perhaps for next year, as opposed to trying to get it for any other time at this point.
There's a way to do that. Run for State's Attorney General's Office.
And George would still be there, rendering the opinion.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Aide number B, from Public Service Administrator Zimmer, lighting upgrade for Heather Lane Park.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Constant.
I move we concur with Building Director, DBW Director William Zimmer, and approve the, authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with DTE for additional lighting in Heather Lane Park as outlined in 9B.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I do have a question, Mr. Chairman. Has there been any thought given to hosting the park or parks and general community closed after dark? And would that, and would that eliminate some of the difficulties we're experiencing?
Yeah, right.
It's posted.
They're posted.
But they little, there's a little bit of a conflict.
Posted, but the question obvious is enforcement needs to be put forward.
The ordinance actually, the one that's actually the most specific is Parkland Park. In that list, the closing time is eight, eight o'clock. The other, I have looked at the ordinance, and some of the older ordinances mention that dark is the closing time, which is, which is the norm for most of the county parks, so summertime, I can understand the need to stay open a little bit past eight o'clock, but perhaps something may have to happen with the ordinance, maybe spell it out a little bit more clearly.
Hello, Bill, in Parkland Park, as I heard the call, I don't know if it was last night or the night before, but someone ends up trying to exit, finds out the gate's closed, calls 911 to ask an officer to come and let them out. So we, we still get people that don't even obey those times that we opposed it.
They don't usually have any trouble finding their way out, they drive right through the wooden fence there, so.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I first want to say I'm glad to see this on agenda, and am eager to see the three lights installed. We were there for a crime prevention walk on August 19th. Currently, Director Zimmer, there are two lights there. One was operational by 9:00 PM, which I would assume is censored. Are these censored as well? I mean, what is the timing mechanism for those lights to come on? And the second pole there, which did not come on when we were there? Just for curiosity, how are these?
I would imagine that all, all the hardware's gonna be upgraded, so normally, they just operate by one photocell, so I would imagine that one photocell would operate all of them.
Okay. Thank you.
There was a follow-up question as to whether it's possible to post for Dearborn Heights residents only, or is that too restrictive with regard to consideration of federal government funds going into those things?
Also, the county government funds basically specifically say that Wayne County residents have to be allowed to, so.
Thank you.
Anything further? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Aide number C, from Public Service Administrator Zimmer, 2014 Street Repair Program, John Daly and Anna Betrayal, Change Order Number Seven, and Final Payment Certificate Number Five.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
Move council concur with the request of Bill Zimmer, Public Service Director, and approve the Change Order Number Seven and Final Payment Certificate Number Five in the amount of $125,691.26. This includes a contract expense or cost decrease in the amount of- This includes a contract expense or cost decrease in the amount of $50,649.28.
Second.
Second by Councilman Apigian. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number D from Public Service Administrator Zimmer, Military Hill Subdivision Paving Program, Change Order Number Two and Final Payment Certificate Number Three.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Apigian?
I move to approve of William Zimmer, Public Service Administrator's recommendations for the Military Hill Subdivision Paving Program, Change Order Number Two, Final Payment Certificate Number Three. Subdivision, these shows a decrease in the cost of $3,317.68 in the contract where he is requiring Change Order Number Two and Final Payment Number Three in the amount of $36,430. Payment for Payment Certificate Number Three as illustrated in item nine C in detail.
Nine D.
E, right. I wrote C.
Second by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number E from Public Service Administrator Zimmer, 2014 Water Improvement Program, Change Order Number Six and Payment Certificate Number Eight.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Kozinski?
Move Council concur with the request of Public Service Administrator Bill Zimmer and approve Change Order Number Six, is it? And Payment Certificate Number Eight in the amount of $229,587. Number Eight includes the contract decrease in the amount of $18,255.56.
Support.
Second by Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number F from Public Service Administrator Zimmer, Pavement Marking.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the council approve RS contracting to mark pavement at various locations in our city with payment upon completion as outlined in nine F.
Second by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number G from Deputy Recreation Director Coniston, reappointment of members of the Dearborn Heights Commission on Aging.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Apigian?
I move to approve of the recommendations of Kim Coniston, Deputy Director of our Parks and Recreation Department, to reappoint four present members of the Dearborn Heights Commission on Aging. Their terms are expired and they are for the following members, Linda Mulhaney, Jennifer Shibe, Lisa Hicks Clayton, Jim Nagy.
Second.
She is also requesting the Aging to ask the mayor and council to reappoint for an additional three years, continue to serve, and she is asking that the mayor, the council approve the members listed above for an additional three years as well, as outlined in nine G.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number H from Deputy Recreation Director Coniston, appointments members of the Dearborn Heights Commission on Aging.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you. I move to concur the appointments to the Commission on Aging for two individuals, Barth Bucciarelli and Bernice, excuse me, Bulleye. And these are three-year terms on commission to expire in 2018 as submitted in nine H and outlined.
Second.
Second by Councilman Apigian. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number I from Fire Chief Brogan, purchase of 2015 Ford Taurus.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Apigian?
I move to approve of Fire Chief Brogan's request, the purchase of 2015 Ford Taurus SEL vehicle as approved in the 2015-16 budget process at the state bid price of $23,380 with payment upon receipt. The quote from the signature Ford is attached in item nine I. This vehicle will be replacing staff pickup truck that are now 10 years old.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number J from Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, Annual Kiwanis Peanut Sale.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I move to approve the application for the solicitation license, City of Dearborn Heights, for the annual Kiwanis peanut sale and the date is running Friday, September 18th, Saturday, September 19th, and Sunday, September 20th, 2015, as outlined in nine J.
Support.
Second by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number K from Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, request to be appointed delegate to the Michigan Municipal League 2015 Convention and reimburse in the expense of $200.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yes, I'd like for council's consideration to make a motion to support the designation as delegate for the Michigan Municipal League Convention, which is September 16th through 18th. I also, can I do it in one motion? Request the $200 reimbursement from our education account, the City Council, which is account number 960.000, the amount of $200 as outlined in nine K.
Second.
Second by Councilman Apigian. Is there any discussion?
Yep, Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Kozinski?
We send you with good wishes and make a special effort to search out opportunities for various grants for the city.
Absolutely. Thank you. Absolutely.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to add, I did share for all the council members, but for the public to know, this conference is a great opportunity bringing together elected officials throughout the state of Michigan and thank you, Councilman Kozinski. I do want to share that some of the opportunities that we'll be discussing includes transportation, diversity, inclusiveness, information technology, environmental sustainability, and other, you know, information, municipal finance and services. So it's really an honor. I say thank you because I do plan to really maximize on all that information and bring it back and share it.
No further discussion? All in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number 11, Ordinances and Resolutions, 11A from Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, resolutions to urge Michigan legislators to reinstate the ban on aerial and explosive fireworks.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you. I move that the City Council adopt the resolution to ask the Michigan Legislature to pass House Bills 4725, 4726, which would repeal Public Act 256 of 2011 and reinstate the ban on aerial and explosive fireworks as outlined in 11A.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor?
I would ask the, if the council would be inclusive, I don't know if the city clerk would want to share in this. I certainly would like to have as in addition to the council, the mayor, maybe the treasurer also that we get included in the whereas be it resolved, our concurrence in those.
Mr. Chairman, I would request that all of the elected officials be included in that, in that consideration. Walter?
Okay, and then John? Okay. Okay, good.
Yeah, because there was a study group and they were going to modify the law and then it never went anywhere. They met and met, but it never, Juno Paladori before it passed away.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Kozinski?
They all went to night school, so they're slow learners.
Working on roads, I think. No offense, representative.
No, no, no offense.
But if in the summertime, the most complaints, at least I get a ton of, of the fireworks and all the noise and disruption and everything else, the families, babies sleeping, I mean, on and on and on. Yeah, litter, debris, so, okay, then we'll make sure that we add all the council members plus it. Any further discussion?
Excuse me, I know it's a little bit out of order for me to speak, but just for your information, we've been getting a lot of resolutions from other cities. City clerks have been sending us, so this is, this is going on. This is a big.
Item issue.
Issue that is traveling through Wayne County, so they have been sharing those resolutions with us, so we'll do the same with the other cities.
Maybe we'll get some thoughts at discussion time, maybe. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number 13, New Business, 13A, Business License Renewed for Anthony's All Car and Truck Sales LLC, 20032 Van Born Road and Rustic Crow Distillery, 3216 North Telegraph Road.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Kozinski?
Move to approve those new business licenses listed in 13A and 13B.
Second.
Second by Councilman Apigian. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. This ends our regular portion of our meeting. Is there anything to come from any of the council members?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath?
Yes. As some of you know, maybe many of you, I had some surgery and I just want to say that there is no finer city than Dearborn Heights. I want to thank everybody for the flowers, the candy, the cards, the best wishes. Councilman Kozinski apparently announced it and then I started getting calls from citizens that I don't even know. So to all of you, you're the greatest and I thank you. Thank you very much.
And our best wishes in your continued recovery.
I'm not going anywhere, trust me.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Kozinski?
Since I was blamed for making the announcement of her hospitalization, it's incumbent upon me to say that, welcome you back, Marge, because when I am stuck on an issue, you're one of the consultants that I call. If you check your telephone roster since I've been back, you'll see some truth in that. And you happen to have service responsibility on both sides of the fence. You were administrative assistant to Mayor Canfield. You spent time before on the council and you are here now again, so you have to believe that, that kind of experience doesn't fall off of a tree. You have to grow it and build a tree.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Anything else from the council? Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you. Two quick announcements. Dearborn Heights Salvation Army Citadel, which services Dearborn, Dearborn Heights, Redford, Livonia, and Garden City, will be sponsoring, and they are currently sponsoring during the month of August, and of course, we're nearing the end of August, but they'll continue to take school supplies. And we do have drop-off bins located at the Carolyn Kennedy Library, the John F. Kennedy Library, the Eaton Senior Center, and the Berwin Senior Center. So just wanted to make that announcement. The second thing I had is I want to thank all of our residents that came out on August 19th for our crime prevention walk. It was hugely successful. It was a great opportunity to engage our residents and to hear from them. We were able to do an assessment of the park as well as talk about crime safety and prevention of crime problems in your neighborhood. Because it was so successful, we are going to be scheduling two additional ones in the month of October. So the first one I do have a date for, which is for St., going to be in St. Albert's, October 14th, but we will be getting more information out in the month of October and we'll be firing the neighborhood as well. And the second one I don't have a date for, but it should be the following week, which is a joint effort with Southwest Dearborn Heights Neighborhood Association will be in Daly Park. So just want to let people know to please come and join us for the crime prevention walks. They're very beneficial. I do want to announce that our Crime Prevention Community Awareness Program, and this is kind of far out, I know it's not time yet, not to think about Halloween, but October 22nd and 29th at 6:00 PM at the Justice Center, we will be having our Halloween Patrol Organization meetings. So if you want to put it on your calendar now, again, October 22nd, 29th, 6:00 PM at the Justice Center. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I.
Councilwoman Kozinski?
Unless I didn't hear it, Councilwoman Hicks, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, the October 14th has a timeframe? What?
I'm sorry, you're right. I probably didn't say that. It was 7:00 PM. Thank you.
7:00 PM.
Appreciate that. Thank you. 7:00 PM for the crime prevention walk.
Good, all right.
Thank you.
Anything else for the council? Councilman Coniston?
Two things very quickly. We're getting ready again for another year with the Dearborn Heights Goodfellows, No Child Without a Christmas, and anybody who can volunteer some time, the same people year after year have been helping out, especially Councilwoman Marge Horvath. So contact either myself, Robert Coniston, or any of the Goodfellow members. My number's 313-292-6500.
Okay. Anything else? Mayor, do you have anything to say? Clerk?
We're getting into full swing for the elections. We've received close to 2,000 absentee applications already. If you have not received your absentee application and you want one, 313-791-3432. The ballots have been requested. We have to go through a process of getting them approved by the state, so it'll be a while till we even get the ballots, but should you have any questions about the November election, there will be three items, three councilmen to be elected, three council people, excuse me. We will have a charter amendment and in the District Seven, Precincts 23 through 27, there will be a technology bond. So as I say, should you have any questions, please contact us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this point, if anyone has any announcements, Vince, yet?
I don't have an announcement, but I'd like to respond to Councilman Apigian's concern with McKenna's claim 615.
Okay.
I re-added numbers and everything that Director Sob approved for payment does add up to the 2,075,13.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone has any announcements, things happen in the city. Mike?
Hello, council chair and mayor. I have a couple of upcoming programs to talk to you about. Wednesday, September 9th, from 7:00 to 8:30 PM at Carolyn Kennedy Library, we will be having a program on backyard herbs. Join Jill Tac as she tells you how to identify herbs and which ones can be utilized for healing and good health. Also Tuesday, September 15th, from 7:00 to 8:30 PM, join Jeff Jaeger as he talks about finding wholesale happiness in a retail world, based on his bestselling books, How to Retire the Cheapskate Way. Jeff will tell you how to live a happier, healthier, and fuller life, but only if you are not willing to pay the price for it. And one more thing, this is on a slightly different tack, but as a reminder, on September 1st, you do have to pay your fines, completely renew your library card. So make sure your items are in and any back fines are cleared. And that is all for now. Thank you for your time and see you at the library.
Thanks, Mike.
Mike, can you renew your card online?
No, it's got to be done. We need to verify identification.
Okay.
I'm going to take my clerk hat off for a second and while we're talking about service clubs, our Kiwanians are asking for help and our Goodfellows are asking for help and I'm a proud member of the Rotary and we're going to ask you for a little help tonight. I think we're a hidden gem in the city and along with another hidden gem in the city, we're going to have an event on October 2nd, a Friday night. It's going to be held at the Stit Post. If you have never been to the Stit Post, you need to go and if you have been there, you will go again. It is Johnny Cash Show, Willie Nelson, and Patsy Cline, and there'll be another special guest. Believe me, I've seen all three. If you like that type of music, you'll have a blast. The tickets are $30 apiece. It includes a buffet dinner by Helena, a beer and wine, and dessert bar, there will be a cash bar. Your $30 ticket also gives you a crack at two raffle prizes of $250,000. Your $30 ticket also gives you a crack at two raffle prizes of $250 apiece. So I think it's a good deal, and we in the Rotary, we don't get as much notoriety as your Kiwanians, but we do good work. We help clothe people, we work with the Salvation Army worldwide. We've helped eradicate polio in nearly the entire world. So I think if you give us a shot, you will really enjoy this evening, and we would really appreciate if you come out. You can contact me for tickets. You can call three one three two seven seven one five four eight. And thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, Will.
You know, $30 for a meal over there is in and of itself, without any of the entertainment, a great evening.
Yep, it sure is. It sure is.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor Pawecko, and council members. A lot's been happening in Lansing.
Why are you?
Oh, sorry. Representative Julie Pawecki. A lot's been happening in Lansing. Unfortunately, some of it is not lawmaking, and you probably know what I'm talking about. So we'll see what happens with that. But let me address some of the issues that you were talking about. You were talking about repealing the fireworks law. Councilman, Representative Henry Yanis from Sterling Heights has a bill that he has introduced, and he has been walking around on the floor trying to get a hearing, because that's where it all starts. He has to have a hearing in order for this to proceed. So he has gotten some numbers on what the individual cities are making revenue-wise from the fireworks. He did not have my numbers, because he does not have a complete list, but he's going to as many reps as possible, particularly on the other side of the aisle, to try to get a hearing, because that's, as I said, where it all starts. So assuming he can get a hearing, I have had many, many letters and emails pouring in about the fireworks and what a disruption it is for vets, for dogs, for children, you name it. Nobody likes the fireworks. So I am in complete support of repealing the law that we have right now, but again, we will have to wait and see what happens with that. But I'm glad that you are writing a resolution, because other cities have written them as well and given me copies of them, so that's good to hear.
Representative Pigian, why don't you explain that the speaker has to direct it to a committee, and then the committee chair has to give it, and that's a way to kill a bill if you don't ever give it a hearing, then it...
And a lot of people don't understand that. They say, well, you wrote a bill, why can't we make it a law? But it's the powers that be, so it starts with the speaker. He decides which committee it is going to, and if he does not want it to get a hearing, it will be assigned to a committee that will never bring it up. They say that they're just burying it, or they're sending it to die. So if they are willing to give it a hearing, then they can have people come in and testify. So anybody in this room, actually, if you are that opposed to the fireworks, you could go and you could testify that you want the fireworks law repealed. And so if there were that many people that were going to testify, they might pass it through a committee. On the other hand, if they don't like the law, or the bill, rather, they don't want it to become a law, they will not pass it. So again, it's the person who is trying to get this bill passed, or, I'm sorry, trying to get this bill to a committee is the opposite party of the speaker.
He's a former firefighter, too, isn't he, the Sterling Heights Rob?
He is, yes, yes. And he's trying to put that information out there, because he has been, has gone on so many runs where fireworks have been the culprit of fires and people getting burned, et cetera. So we'll see what happens with that. I got your resolution, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, on the lighting issue that's happening with the DTE going for an increase in the rates, and it's still with the MPSC, so they have to make their decision whether or not they can increase their rates. I've been reading that some cities are choosing to purchase their lights, that they're finding that it's cheaper if they purchase their lights and then maintain them themselves, as opposed to renting, so to speak, from DTE and then having to pay for the new LED lightbulbs. So I don't know if that's an option that has been explored at all?
We explored it, and we were told that the unique thing is DT has right-of-way, the community had passed resolution.
Okay.
And that may not be transferable. So companies we've inquired to that handle outside lighting have told us that that is a predicament. The other thing is that DT, I think that's so profitable for them, they really are not interested in selling...
Probably not.
Public lighting to an outside firm.
Sure. So again, well, that's another thing. We'll wait and see what the MPSC decides on this rate case in the fall, because they said it's supposed to come back in the fall. And finally, roads, a real frustration for me, as well as many other reps. The situation right now is there are enough, can I say, am I allowed to say, the party that's in power?
Yeah.
There are enough Republicans right now who have written all of these road bills that they can pass anything that they want. However, there are many Republican reps who have taken a pledge that they would not raise taxes, and so they are not willing to vote yes on these bills that they have written. And so they're coming to the Democrats, and so people are saying, well, why don't the Dems just vote for it? Well, the situation is, it has been decided that $1.2 billion is the magic number, and that's how much money they need to improve our roads, to maintain the infrastructure, et cetera. Six hundred million of that would come through revenue, so that's all fine and dandy. The other 600 million, they want to pull out of the general fund. Now, that's not automatically there every single time down the road, that they, no pun intended, down the road, that they want to pay for all of these road projects. So they could tap into public safety, they could tap into health, they could tap into the school aid fund. Even though they're not supposed to do that, they could still take money out of the school aid fund, which they have done in the past, unfortunately. So it's not a sustainable plan whatsoever, and so the Dems are not going to vote for a plan that's not sustainable. To make matters even worse, Michigan will have, and other states, will have to start paying more for the Medicaid expansion. We'll be required to pay more. And so Governor Snyder wanted that to begin in 2016, put that into the budget so we could start paying that early, and that was decided that was not a good plan. So then in 2017, that has to be paid for. So now not only do we have 600 million for the roads that they want to take out of the general fund, there will also be about 200 million for Medicaid expansion that will have to come out of the budget. Where's that money going to come from? No one knows. So until something sustainable is brought forward, that is why the Dems are not voting for it. So we're not just trying to be stubborn and not try to play their game. We just want something that's sustainable. Otherwise, the next group of reps that come in are going to be in the same boat, and they're going to have to try to figure out the next plan. So that's where they stand. So even though we are on recess in district work period, the conference committee are really the people that are working on the plan. And so I'm not part of that. There are, I don't know how many, to be honest, are on this conference committee, but they are the ones that are working on it, along with Governor Snyder, who is in China, but he will be back soon. So even though we're not in Lansing, the road bills are still being worked on, because I heard comments that, oh, you should be part-time, but it is really a full-time job. So, and I am working really hard, I promise. So questions for me?
Mr. Chair. Thank you, Representative, for protecting, because one of the concerns, and I think, Councilwoman, when you go up to Traverse City and say hi to Mayor Estes for me, but I am very concerned that the state school aid and revenue sharing for communities is what they're estimating to tap in...
Sure.
For a good portion, that's 600 million. And you standing up, I read when many of us voted no on that bill, on that state vote last year on the roads...
Constance.
That most of us did not like the fact it was like a Christmas tree, and there was all that stuff included.
Absolutely, yes.
Really, what we, I think, and I may be wrong, but at least the message I was sending with my vote is, let's have traditionally road money go to roads.
To the roads, yes.
And don't be intermingling all this stuff. So if it takes a billion, too, as much as we don't like it, the fact of the matter is, these roads need and have to be fixed. So that's one person's comment, but I think that I had two gentlemen, or I had a couple, one gentleman and wife comment, again, because I hear all the time about Beach Daly Road, and that's, you know, when's it going to get fixed? And, you know, I'm saying, well, we don't have enough money.
Sure.
It's a county road. It's important that enough money come from the state, and then it can get fixed. But thank you for your report and your good service...
Oh, you're very welcome.
Up there and representing us well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Welcome.
Thank you, Rep.
Thanks very much.
Yep, thank you. Any other announcements?
Move Goodyear?
Nope, wait, got one more. At this point, if anyone has any questions or concerns, please direct them...
Been a long time.
Direct them to me. You'll have three minutes to talk. After you give your name, street, and the city you live in, Councilman Constance will keep track. We will pause when we respond or answer if needed. Councilman Constance will hold up this sign when you have 15 seconds left, and the stop sign will be when your three minutes is up. So if anyone has anything, please come to the podium, sir. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is John Cantrell. I live on McDonald and southwest Dearborn Heights. I'm happy that we have the ordinance department that gets out and roams around through the neighborhood. I am a little disturbed of some of the nitpicking the ordinance department is doing. For example, I had a split rail fence in my front yard for 35-plus years. I got a correction reminder this month. They either take the fence down, or the city will take it down and bill me for it. Ordinance officer came out, we compromised, he wanted me to cut five inches off the top of it. It looks, would look like garbage. My neighbor across the street, he cut his off. It looks like trash. Now, and it's supposed to be an eyesore. I don't know if you want to look at this or not. But you pick on little things like that. You've got, the city came out and cut the neighbor's tree down in the city strip last fall, came in there with a stump grinder, ground the stump up, left a big pile of stump grinding there. Ordinance officer said, well, you've got 10 days, the city's got one year to clean it up. I don't think that is right. I think that should be cleaned up now. Another street down, another house down the street, garbage cans sitting in front of the gate, garbage all over the front yard. Don't ever hear nothing about that. Going down Gully, you've got split rail fence, just like I had, only taller than mine was. Eaton, same thing. Nothing's been done about it. Another house around Gully, you've got a wood post, wood wire fence coming up to the sidewalk. That's been there. I've been down there for 40 years, and it's still there. Eaton, Penny and Gully, another ordinance violation that they've ignored is a basketball hoop been sitting in the street or on the city strip for all summer long. I drove by there before I came up here tonight. It is still sitting there. And like I say, I'm glad we've got an ordinance department, but there is a lot more that they could be picking on than the, than what they are. I try to keep my yard and my property up to date and clean. Another thing, they told me I can't park my utility trailer on the apron in front of my garage. I got to park it in the grass. I've always been told that was a city violation parking in the grass. But up and down Gully, they park on the grass in the city strip every night.
John, have you talked to Jack McKintyre, ordinance officer, or was it just...
I talked to, I talked to one of the, I guess, I guess it was Jack that I talked to. I don't remember the name, but he told me that fence can only be two foot high.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
They call it a garden fence. A garden fence is something to keep animals out of the garden. That is a split rail, decorative fence.
Yeah. I've had a couple other instances where I've talked to ordinance. I personally find the decorative fences, the rail fences, not at all unacceptable, but the ordinances they are. If this council was agreeable to amend that section of the fence ordinance, I think, because there's many people like John here who have, and they really, I think, add to the appearance of the house. But I've had a couple of these, but, and we went back and I looked at the ordinance, and the ordinance says you can't have, I think, what is it, higher than four feet or something, two feet.
Two feet.
Two feet, and there's got to be a nice balance. And I know that the individual I talked with had, there's, I think they told me for 20 years, and not an area that, I'm not sure exactly, I think some of these complaints came from somebody in the area does not like those fences, and I think handed over ordinance a listing. And I'm going to tell you, I saw the picture. I'll go out and take a look at yours.
I took it down.
Oh, you have?
Yes, I did. I took it down, because me and my wife, we figured if you cut that off and have one inch above that top rail, it's going to look like garbage.
Yeah, I agree.
So I took it down. In the meantime, taking it down, I had a heart attack, too.
I'm sorry to hear that, but I'm going to tell you that I, the ones that I've seen and been at, that people have called me, I don't think any of us would find objectionable. They're decorative. The one I went out to, they had not a whole fence, but a portion, and then they had like a flower bouquet surrounding it, and it really looked attractive. I think it added to the neighborhood and it added to their home. So I appreciate him coming here, but, and it's unfortunate that he got ill over it, but these are not something I find objectional, but I'm in an administrative standpoint, I can't tell an ordinance officer not to follow the law.
Well, what we possibly could do is look at it, have Gary look into the change, and maybe put a moratorium on those type of fences until something's done. I know we've done that in past years, so that, you know, no one will have to worry about taking them down, cutting them, or those type of things. So maybe that's something we can, you know, direct Gary to do, and then, I don't know if we need something official at the next council meeting, maybe a letter just saying, you know...
Well, the ordinance officer here, let's, since a moratorium is possibly coming, let's cease and desist on enforcement of those.
Okay.
And one other thing there, he was talking about, someone mentioned here about the appearance of the business district. Why aren't you ordinance officers after these businesses with vegetation growing up around the, around the edge of their building, trees and shrubs and stuff like that? You got a landmark shop. You look, drive by there and look down the alley, you got more trees growing out of the foundation than you do anything else. Why isn't the ordinance department doing something about stuff like that, instead of picking on, picking on something that looks decent?
Okay, we'll look and see, so.
I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Troy Brown, two three four two zero Hanover Street. A few weeks ago, I asked some questions that you weren't able to answer as it related to data, which you used to vote on the CSO bond taxation. And since then, I bet, last week I quoted Michigan compiled law one forty-one two seventy-oh-one, and I stated that our city was in violation of that, because the mills were not adjusted. They were not adjusted. And so then I did some more searching, because... Uh, 141428 reads, "Every audit report shall do the following," and, uh, item D says, "Disclose any fiscal irregularities, including but not limited to any deviations from requirements of Section 4." You say, "Why is that important?" Well, that's important, because obviously, we have Plant Moran, who gave us a report, and then we have a lawyer that told us that you were overcharging us. It's not surplus, by the way, it's, oh, it's an overcharge, and, um, we have no meeting for that, Mr. Chairman. You were supposed to schedule a meeting for that. We canceled Tuesday. This is an important issue. I don't understand that. This is really important.
I did have a little discussion with the mayor and Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, uh, on that, and then, of course, you're familiar with the letter that we received from attorney, uh, saying that money cannot be...
That was in June. That was in June.
And other places.
And that, right?
And the majority of us kind of felt that there was no need to have an additional meeting.
Okay. Well, maybe that, maybe that compiled law, a violation of that compiled law, isn't enough. It goes on to say, "Over-captured taxes that are not necessary to complete the projects identified in a tax increment financing plan, i.e. excess fund balance, should be disclosed and recommended that excess be refunded. Note, taxes may only be refunded proportionally to the original capture. All unused monies may not be refunded to the general fund." Okay? Now that's, now this is right out of Plant Moran's guide from the state of Michigan. Here's the picture of the manual, okay? Now, obviously, I'm not a CPA, so I'm not well-versed in what that says, but common sense tells me that applies to what we have here.
Well, you mentioned tax increment finance authority.
No, 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 that's, no, no, that's not, no, that's not TIFA.
He's talking, he's talking about tax increment financing and a capture from that. I don't believe that section would pertain in this situation whatsoever.
No, no, this is not TIFA. No, 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 it's not TIFA.
It's a, it's a capture.
It's a capture.
It's a, it's a...
That's right. You captured our taxes, Mr. Chairman, illegally. Yes, you did, in violation of 1412701, item four. Did you read it?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Well, okay. So, so then let's, let's, let's go to the appendix B of that same guidance, okay? And it says that these violations, these are the violations, improper co-mingling of debt service funds. I've been trying to get information about the funds, where the money is for this CSO bond. I've been trying to get information since April on where that money resides, all right? So there's a violation. Inner fund borrowing of debt service money. Now, don't forget, this is included in the water fund, and we just borrowed money from the water fund in May. You approved it. All right? And then, uh, there's two other things. Use of debt service money for other than debt service payments, which is what you said, we can't use it to fix the creek. And then excess tax levies for debt services purposes, these are illegal. And if, if there, if there's not a meeting, if there's ever been a meeting that's mandated because of a, a procedure, or the lack thereof, of being overcharged for four years running, now is the time. I don't understand it. I'm not a CPA, and I can see that. Of course, I'm studying it, Mr. Chairman.
I, I will give you this, I will, uh, look into it again, and, uh, I will personally get back to you when I have an answer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wish to bring anything before us? So you're none? Move by Councilman Horvath? Second by Councilman Constance Nodurn. On favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.